And the League and American Democracy Project are delighted to bring you this City Council Forum today, and we will feature those candidates running in contested district races for the common council in Mishawaka. And these are Council District Two candidates Joel Dendu and Mike Belovich; Council District Three candidates Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff and Tony Hazen; and Council District Four candidates Corey Smith and Kate Volker. And we are delighted that all of them could join us this evening. So why don't we begin with a quick round of applause for the candidates for the evening. Now, the format for this evening's forum will be to start with some brief opening statements, where candidates will have a minute each to talk a little bit about themselves and why they're running. And then we'll move to the Q and A. And you have been submitting your note cards, and our League of Women Voters screeners are just checking them quickly to see if they are relevant to the opposite city council. And if so, they will get those up to me, and we'll get to as many questions as possible. We do have a timekeeper, two timekeepers, Amanda and Rachel there in the back. Can you hold up what you have? Okay, so the candidates can see how many seconds they have left. I will call out the number of seconds available for responding to each question. And to get to as many of those questions as possible, that length of response may vary, anywhere from 30 seconds up to 90 seconds, but with a general response time being 60 seconds. And of course, I would reserve the right to extend debate if it seems like people have a lot more to say. We will also vary the person who answers each question first, so that folks from different districts get their questions first, so you're not always carrying the candidates in the same order. And then finally, each candidate will have 30 seconds to tell you why they deserve your vote on Election Day. You won't get to every topic imaginable this evening, but you can learn more about these candidates at Vote411.org. And that is an online voter guide put together by the American Democracy Project and the League of Women Voters of the South Bend area. So we hope you'll go online, Vote411.org, and learn more about each of these candidates. We will start now with opening statements, hearing first from Council District Two Democrat, Joel Dendu.
Thank you, Dr. Vinian. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the American Democracy Project for hosting this event. And thank you so much to everyone out here in the audience, both in person and via Facebook. My name is Joel Dendu. I'm running for Mishawaka City Council District Two. I graduated from Mishawaka High School, Bethel College, Arizona State University, and finally, Notre Dame Law School. I have a small law practice in downtown Mishawaka with my law partner Dick Curry. I have a beautiful wife, who is thankfully joining me this evening, and three wonderful children. I believe that we're on the cusp of facing some very unique challenges as a city, particularly with the fiscal cliff that's on the horizon. There are going to be difficult budget choices that have to be made, and I believe that I have the expertise and the training and the background to make those difficult decisions. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from District Two Republican, Mike Belovich.
Hello, and thank you, Professor Vinian, and the Mishawaka Public Library for hosting this event. I'm a lifelong resident of the city. I graduated from Mishawaka High School, went to IU, earned a bachelor's degree in business management, and upon graduation, I went into the Marine Corps. And I served for a total of 30 years, four years on active duty and 26 in the reserves. My wife and I came back to Mishawaka. I've raised three children here in the community, and I believe that Mishawaka is in very great shape. We do have a fiscal cliff that's approaching, but I think that we are prepared for that, and we're moving forward, and I hope to lead the second district for the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we move to Council District Three, hearing first from Democrat Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our sponsors, our hosts, and volunteers that made tonight possible. As Professor Vinian stated, my name is Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff. I'm the incumbent for the third district. I was selected for this role because of a precinct caucus after Ross Steel became our state representative. I am a lifelong resident of Mishawaka with two grown children, Matt and Maggie. I'm in my 24th year of teaching. I graduated with my bachelor's and master's from IU SB. As a community leader, neighborhood advocate, teacher, mother, and strong woman, I bring a unique perspective to the city council. I am passionate about this community. I am passionate about families. My priority will be to continue to focus on safe neighborhoods, sustainable economic development, and business growth while providing quality jobs for our community. My goals and priorities that are important to you, such as public safety, first responders, are also important to me as well, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we hear from District Three Republican, Tony Hazen.
Hello, my name is Tony Hazen. I'm running for the third district council seat in the city of Mishawaka. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I am a lifelong resident of Mishawaka. I've been married to my wife, Luanne, for 44 years. We have four children, nine grandchildren. All of our children, along with their spouses and grandchildren, live in the city of Mishawaka. I served 23 years on the Mishawaka Police Department, served as a sergeant in the Metro-Narcotics Unit as undercover officer, lieutenant in charge of the afternoon shift, detective bureau, assistant chief in the uniform division in the last six and a half years as the police chief. My wife and I presently own Hazen Enterprises, which operates convenience stores and subways in the area. And I'm running for the council because I believe that it's our duty to give back to the community. In my case, I think it's even a stronger duty. I graduated from Mishawaka, never went to college, have achieved a job that I've wanted ever since I was a little boy through the city. I became a police officer, and then police chief. I'm seeing this time. Do I have to quit? I do think it's everyone's obligation to give back to the community. I try to do that every day, and I'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Council District Four, we will hear first from Democrat Corey Smith.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Professor. Thank you to the American Democracy Project of IU SB and the League of Women Voters for putting these events together. Thanks to you all for taking the time to be engaged and care about your community and be involved in the election, and thanks to the other candidates who all clearly care a lot about Mishawaka. I also want to thank the library for hosting us, and hello to you on Facebook and YouTube. Thanks for taking the time to watch. I am someone that has worked on a array of issues over the years, on human trafficking, on a lot of tough issues that I've worked across the aisle with Republicans and Democrats. I've worked with business. I've worked with labor. I've worked with nonprofits. I've worked with law enforcement. I care a lot about this country. I care a lot about the community. I believe that I bring an experience in tackling a lot of different issues, and I don't shy away from tough issues. In fact, if there is a tough issue, I probably will gravitate towards it. I do think the challenge of the fiscal cliff that's been mentioned is something that I thought a lot about in recent weeks, and something I'm committed to help on. And I love it here. My family's here, and I'm excited to be here and talk about the issues, so thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, do we also have the stop sign? We had added a fourth level card. Okay. And finally, last but not least, we hear from District Four Republican, Kate Volker.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. My name is Kate Volker. I am the current councilwoman for the fourth district of Mishawaka, and I've served for seven years in that position. My husband and I chose Mishawaka nearly 30 years ago when we purchased an historic home in downtown Mishawaka. We raised our four children here. I was educated in local schools, actually grew up in South Bend, went to St. Matthews for any St. Matz fans here, Marion High School, and St. Mary's College. I've had a strong interest in Mishawaka neighborhoods for many, many years. Fabricating for my constituents is the highest priority that I have, and I consider that my highest responsibility. My work experience includes a career in sales and sales management, as well as over 10 years as executive director of a local nonprofit. I'm the owner of a small business at this time. I also have significant leadership experience as a volunteer, serving as the president of the Junior League of South Bend, as well as our revenue cancer services board of directors, United Way Board, Marion High School Board, and I currently am active on the Mishawaka Historic Commission and Inspire Mishawaka. That's why you want me. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will now go move to questions, and I will start right off the bat with three questions submitted related to law enforcement. And this question will go first to Kate Volker of District Four. It says, "How do you feel about local law enforcement working with federal law enforcement, especially when it comes to immigration issues?"
That's an interesting question. I think that I am not an expert on immigration. I know that my neighbor Corey Smith is more of an expert than I am. I think that, in my case, I believe that federal law in terms of illegal immigration should take precedence. If you're asking about sanctuary cities, I am not in favor of sanctuary cities, and that's about all I know about it. Thank you. Thank you. Corey Smith.
In 60 seconds? So here's what I would...
Second, not minutes.
60 seconds. Here's what I would say on that issue. There's been a number of attempts over the years to have local law enforcement enforce federal immigration law. There was a bill that was tried many times called the CLEAR Act. I can't remember the exact acronym. But what we heard and what I saw repeatedly from law enforcement was, this was not something that was particularly exciting to them because they wanted to be focused on serious criminals, violent crime, not civil immigration violations, no matter how they felt about the issue of immigration. I've also seen where it would alienate communities, immigrant communities, and have challenges around, like for example, domestic violence and sexual assault. I think the other challenge you have too is it could end up being an unfunded mandate by the federal government. And given the inability to get immigration reform done on the federal level, I would be very careful about having them pass on more of the immigration enforcement, immigration authorities to local law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. We hear next from District Three candidate, Tony Hazen.
Being the past policeman, past police chief, I have a different view than my neighbor to the left of me. In my opinion, it's a simple question. The law is the law, and whether it's federal law, or state law, or municipal law, that you enforce it, and you enforce it to the best of your ability. In all my experiences, I've worked, when I was undercover, we worked with the FBI, the DEA. We all crossed borders. We worked together. I think they're there to cover your back, and we've got to be there to have their back. So I don't think it's an issue. I think we can cloud the waters and murk them up with everything else, but I think we just stick to the simple thing, that the law is the law, and we're going to enforce the law. And as a policeman, I think we almost have to do that. As far as federal mandates without any kind of financing, the federal government and the state government does that on a regular basis, and we'll probably get into some of that a little bit later today. That happens all the time.
Thank you. Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
Thank you very much. It is a city's duty to follow and uphold national law. With that said, we need to maintain safe and welcoming neighborhoods and communities for people of all nationalities. I do believe that local government needs to support federal government and uphold those laws to the best of their ability, but I also understand that the people of our city, all people, contribute, and I look forward to supporting residents of the entire city.
Thank you. Now turning to District Two, Mike Belovich.
I think the question was a very simple one, and I think that the Mishawaka Police should continue to work hand in hand with the state police, the county police, and any federal organization in enforcing the laws that are on the books. As a marine officer, I spent 30 years in the military, and when I received an order from my commanding officer, I didn't debate it. I followed it, and our police should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joel Dendu.
My answer is that there has to be a balance. As an attorney, I can tell you that yes, from a technical standpoint, immigration falls within federal purview. That being said, I'm going to quote one of my favorite TV shows, The West Wing. All politics is local. Yes, we absolutely have a duty to enforce the law and to follow the law, but there's a great deal of latitude in how it's carried out, in how it's enforced. And so when we're talking about directly impacting people's lives, and again, the law needs to be followed, there needs to be a balance between how much is controlled at the local level and how much is controlled at the federal level.
Thank you. We will now turn to the next question. We'll hear first on this question from Tony Hazen of District Three. What is your position on strong body camera policies for police officers? Should officers be required to keep their cameras on whenever interacting with members of the public? Why or why not?
I think body cameras could be a good thing. I don't know that I'm 100% behind them. I think the first thing we have to do is make sure we can afford them, and they talked the other day about storage and how we can keep that storage, what's legal and not legal. If I go into a home, one spouse wants me there with the camera on, the other spouse doesn't want me there with camera on. I think a lot of those issues have to be worked out. I also know for a fact, running my businesses and having cameras in them, every time something happens, the camera's usually broken, someone forgot to turn it on. And that's going to happen to police officers, and I don't think we should throw them under the bus just because they forgot to turn their camera on. So I think there's a lot of things that we have to work out before we jump on the bandwagon with everyone else and say, "We've got to have all these cameras out there for policemen." I do think, being a policeman, retired policeman, I think it's kind of came to a sad state of affairs that we don't trust our policemen enough to just take their words for things. And I know there's bad policemen out there, and I understand that. But as a whole, I think most of them are pretty darn good, and we ought to take their word for what they say. Thank you.
Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
Thank you, Dr. Vinian. First of all, I would like to say that I am fully supportive of body cameras for police. The cost involved becomes questionable in how we fund that. However, having body cameras on police not only protects our police department, our officers, but it also protects the citizens. Okay? So what, when we are protecting our officers, we are also protecting our citizens, you and I, every single day. The only concern I have is privacy, and we need to look to other communities that have done this and implemented this, how they have done it, the problems that they've come across, and how that we can, how we can deal with those issues to make it fair and equitable for both sides. But I do see it as a very, as a positive for our community.
Thank you. Moving next, we'll hear from District Two candidate, Mike Belovich.
Thank you. I would support body cameras. I know we have some in this city right now that are being used, and we know what happened recently in the city of South Bend. One thing that I know is they are terribly expensive, but I would like to see us continue to purchase body cameras. But I think we should go a bit farther than South Bend. They have equipment now that when an officer draws his weapon, whether the camera was on, or if the camera was turned off, it automatically goes on. And I think if we're going to move forward and buy that type of equipment, we should certainly invest in the higher level of model, so that that would protect not only the police officer, but our citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Dendu.
I would be for them always being turned on. It's both a safety measure for the citizens, for the civilians, but also for the police officers. The fact that it can be exactly documented, "No, I wasn't too rough with this individual." No, this individual was in fact resisting arrest. I think that's, that can be incredibly beneficial to the police officers. The point regarding the cost, I think that's an excellent point. That being said, the savings, the potential liability savings that could occur as a result of perhaps frivolous lawsuits being able to be thrown out much easier when we've got video documentation of the police officer acting exactly as he or she should have, that could bring about a great deal of savings in the long run, having that body camera policy. My one concern would be to make sure that the police officers understand that we are standing behind them on their decisions. In life and death situations, which they are facing, having to think, "Oh goodness, someone's going to be watching this, reviewing my every move," I can't imagine what that would be like. So that would be my one concern.
Thank you. And now we'll pass the mic back to the other end of the table to hear from Kate Volker of District Four.
Thank you. As people said the last debate, there is, there are advantages and disadvantages to going towards the end. I also am in favor of body cameras, and I do like the idea of cameras that come on automatically when a gun is pulled, if in fact somebody doesn't have the body camera on. One of the, one of the cost issues, not only of buying a body camera, the other, probably larger cost issue is the storage of the data, because data needs to be stored in perpetuity. And that's something that our IT department is talking with the police department now about trying to figure out how we can store that data forever. Thank you. Thank you. Corey Smith.
Yeah, I am in favor of police wearing cameras. I think they're protecting for the police and protecting the public. I've asked some of the police I know and through work over time, and you know, some of them, I just talked to someone recently, said originally I was against them, but the more I thought about it, the more I realized it could be something that could help me and protect me. I think the bigger question to me also is, you know, and this is always the way I'm going to approach these issues, but the devil's in the details of the policy, right? So the data retention has been raised. Do police, are they mandatory in the sense of how long and when? Do you just have them on when the gun is pulled? Do they prohibit pre-report viewing by police officers? That's been a big issue. The data retention's been raised, and that's expensive. Any individual filing complaints, are they allowed to access the footage? How long will the data be retained? You're also going to hear privacy concerns. That's not necessarily my concern, but I think that's the array of issues. But I do support cameras on police, yes.
Thank you very much. For the next question, we'll go back to District Two, hearing first from Joel Dendu. This is our final of the cards submitted on law enforcement. It says, "What is your position on the creation of a civilian review board or community advisory board to help with police oversight?"
Me or Joel? Okay. Just let him do it. First off, I'd like to say a few audience members let me know that I was holding the microphone way too close to my mouth, so I apologize about that. Regarding a civilian review board for oversight of police, that is something that I could get on board with. That being said, it would need to be individuals that have had, either that have been former police officers or that have experience in that area. Like I alluded to in my answer regarding the body camera policy, I just can't begin to imagine what it would be like facing those life and death situations, knowing, "Am I supposed to use lethal force here? Am I supposed to use something less than lethal force?" Those are decisions that someone who hasn't had those, that experience, who hasn't had that training, I just don't know how a person can adequately make decisions about, "This was the right decision or this was the wrong decision." So I would be in support of a board like that, but it would need to be made up of proper individuals.
Mike Belovich.
That's a difficult question to answer. I'm not certain what the mission of that review board would actually be. Is it involving situations with conduct? Is it involving situations with performance and promotion? If it were for performance and promotion, I may have an interest in that, but again, until I saw what the actual mission or the function of that committee would be, I'm uncertain on that.
Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
Sorry. So currently, we do not have a civilian review board, and we talked about possibly having a merit review board. But while I agree that some oversight is good, I believe that too much oversight is really not a good thing. We do not need another bureaucratic layer within this. I believe that our police officers are professionals, and I believe that they should be treated as such. What is the purpose of the oversight board is something that I would also want to know. And I would certainly be welcoming and open to talking about the merits of an oversight board. Anything that's going to make our officers and our civilians safer is something that I would, that I would support, but I'd like to hear more about it first.
Tony Hazen.
I'm not against review boards, but I don't know if it would have a place in Mishawaka right now. The way it operates right now in the state of Indiana is the police chief can get five days' suspension, just call you there and say, "You messed up. You get five days." Anything over that has to go to the Board of Public Safety, and they review it, and then they can get more than that. So in my mind, we kind of have a review board anyways. The other thing that I don't know that if we really want, I think when the question of review boards come up, we have a breakdown between the police department and the community then. They're, they're requesting something because they don't believe the police department's doing their job. So I would hope that we never get to that, that stage in Mishawaka. I don't think we're anywhere near that right now, so I think I'd have to take a real strong look at it and see if that's going to fit in our city.
Thank you. District Four, Corey Smith.
Maybe. It depends. First of all, I would ask the question, "What is the problem we're trying to solve? Is there a pattern of abuse? Is there some systematic issue?" I haven't seen that when I've seen and looked into and followed Mishawaka Police Department. I think too, again, I'll be a broken record, but to me, devil's in the details. What is the process? What are the qualifications for appointment? What are the terms for appointment? What, what power and authority review does the review board have? I've studied, and it looks like there's at least three general models, investigative focus, review focus, auditor focus. So I think there's a lot of questions I would have, and first, I would want someone to present a concrete systematic problem, and then if there is, I would want to get into the details of what the review process, what kind of people, what qualifications. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Kate Volker.
Thank you. I agree with you, Corey, in that at this time, there really isn't a problem in the city of Mishawaka with the police department and how it works with the city and with citizens. I would also say that the Board of Public Safety in many ways does function already as a civilian review board, because they're made up, there are civilians on that. So they represent the citizens of Mishawaka. And then the last thing that I would bring up is, we have an administrative body in place with the, or with the Mishawaka Police, and to put another administrative, or as Stacy said, a bureaucratic body between the police officers and the administration, I don't think really would be beneficial, and frankly, it would be micromanaging the police, just the process that's already in place, and there really isn't a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, for this next question, we will hear first from District Four candidate, Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff. The question is this, "Would you support or oppose an annual residential landlord rental property inspection ordinance in the city of Mishawaka, conducted by the Mishawaka Code Enforcement Department, with a fee not to exceed $10 per physical structure?" So an annual inspection ordinance.
All right. So I have a lot of thoughts on this, actually. I do support that if, once the ordinance is written, if it makes sense. I would like to work through the particulars of the ordinance itself, but in general, with our, we have a lot of absentee landlords, and we have a lot of rental homes where they are not being taken care of in a manner that they should be. And with that said, we also have a lot of rental homes that are being very well managed. But I do believe that $10 is relatively affordable if you are a landlord, and in order to make sure that we have good living conditions for all of our citizens, that properties are being maintained in a, in a proper manner for all the citizens, not just the people with money, I think that that would be very appropriate.
Thank you. Tony Hazen. Tony Hazen.
I could probably answer it. One word would be no, I'm not for it. I think the code enforcement does an awesome job right now. I think we have the tools and the departments in place to make sure those things happen. If they're not happening, then we probably need to take a look at that and make sure that they are happening. We had a question last week, the other panel up here, and they talked to code enforcement. Code enforcement said they had enough officers, so I don't, I don't think that's an issue of why things aren't being done if they're not. So I would just say, no, I'm not for it. I think it would be another burden on the city, cost-wise and manpower-wise, so I don't think I'd be for it.
Thank you. We'll move to District Four, Corey Smith.
I think so. I think it sounds like a reasonable fee, so the fee is not high. I wanted to know more about the details. I think that the point made about code enforcement is a good one. I've seen, everything that I've seen is that they're doing a really good job, you know, and as was mentioned, that they have the resources. I think again, is there a significant problem? Is that problem not being met by the current structure and staffing of code enforcement? If there is a problem, you know, obviously, if there is a problem with rental properties and absentee landlords, that's an issue that affects everyone, affects property owners, it affects the renters. And so I do think that it's worth looking into, but I would have to see if there's a gap or something, somewhere where the code enforcement is falling short, where that need is not being addressed.
Thank you. Kate Volker.
Thank you. I actually would say that our code enforcement program right now does a really wonderful job, and it is staffed by an incredibly committed group of people that have the best interests of not only the city of Mishawaka, but also the renters in mind. I would also be concerned if we were to go in that direction of what the purpose would be. Are we the health department? Is it building codes? Are we looking at property maintenance? There are many, many questions that would have to be answered before I would be in favor of moving in this direction. Then finally, $10 a residence or a building would not cover the cost that we would need to invest in order to make this happen. So I think that from, since we're all facing the financial, the fiscal cliff, that financially it's really not affordable. And the best thing we can do right now is work with the code enforcement program that we have in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's pass the microphone all the way to Mike Belovich from District Two.
Thank you. I see an old friend, George Obern, out in the audience, and George had code enforcement supervisory responsibilities for a number of years, and he can attest to the fact that I was in his office quite frequently. I'm very strong supporting protection of property values in the city of Mishawaka, but at this point in time, I think our code enforcement does a very good job of following the codes and enforcing those codes. So at this point in time, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the expense of creating another bureaucracy or additional work for the code enforcement, so I would be opposed to that at this point in time.
Thank you. Joel Dundoo.
I think both Corey Smith and Tony Hazen have made this point at some point in time, and I'm in agreement with it. If there isn't necessarily a problem, do we need to come up with a solution for something? And you might be thinking, well, adding this additional regulation, is it really that cumbersome or burdensome if we've got it and we don't really have a problem in the first place? Additional regulation creates headaches. It creates something additional, something extra for landlords to think about. That $10 cost, though maybe it's low, like Kate Volker said, it's probably too low. It might just get passed on to renters anyway, which is not necessarily something that we're looking for. Right now, the Indiana code, state law, has certain standards of habitability that a landlord has to live up to, and if the landlord doesn't, renters have legal rights, they have remedies that they can pursue. So if there isn't a problem that we're trying to fix, I'm not sure that I would be for such a regulation.
Thank you. Let's pass the microphone to District Four candidate, Corey Smith. We have a specific question for the District Four candidates, and it is this, "What are your views on the possibility of closing off Wilson Boulevard to through traffic in the interest of, one, safety, two, peace of the people on the River Walk, and three, peace of the people in that neighborhood?"
I have a feeling I know specifically who asked this question. I actually live at Wilson Boulevard. I know there's been work on that intersection for safety. It is incredible. I mean, I know that there's been the additional signage put in, and I'm pretty shocked when I see on a daily basis, people still not only run or come to a rolling stop, but sometimes go through it at full speed. I'm very concerned about that, especially as the traffic increases and there's more development, which is fantastic for Parks and Recreation. But I really think that, I don't, I don't know that closing down Wilson Boulevard is the answer. I think that may be a burden to folks, but I do think it certainly needs to be something else done, whether it's, you know, having police periodically sit there or have some sort of additional signage or raising there, because what I don't want to see is for someone to get hurt or a child to get killed and then it become an issue. And so I'm glad the issue was raised, but I do think additional things need to be done for the safety of that intersection.
Thank you very much. I actually walk the River Walk in Wilson Boulevard probably five times a week, so I'm really familiar with it. I've also been asked, not the specific question, but I have had people express concerns to me about speed, not only on Wilson Boulevard, but also on Calhoun and the other streets that come off of Wilson, as people are trying to maybe cut through to Mishawaka Avenue and avoid a stoplight. I think my biggest concern would be, or question would be, do the neighbors really want it? And I would suggest that if we were going to pursue closing Wilson Boulevard or any other street in Mishawaka, that there would be a committee put together of representatives from the city of Mishawaka, the police department, and the neighborhoods to really determine if that's the best use or the best way to go, rather than, rather just one or two individuals making that decision, so.
Thank you. Please pass the microphone to Tony Hazen from District Three. Are there any particular safety hazards that people in your district have complained about? If so, what do you intend to do about them?
I haven't received, I've been out walking quite a bit, and I haven't received any safety hazards as far as traffic or really crime to say. I think we're very fortunate in Mishawaka, especially the Third District, it's made up mostly residential and mostly nice homes and nice neighborhoods, so I really haven't had any complaints about that.
Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
While I've been on the city council, we have been dealing with a few safety hazards, actually. One was the trolley stop across from Twin Branch Park. It was a safety hazard for the young kids that were playing there. It was a safety concern for the businesses and homes of the people that live there. There were a number of people that behaved questionably, that the police were called out on several times. I know the residents were concerned about it. We have since got that trolley stop moved. There have been a couple other situations where we had somebody living in a backyard in a tent. I worked with code enforcement and our local police department to get that situation taken care of, so those are just a couple of the situations that we've worked on.
Thank you. Now we move to District Two, Mike Belovich. Same question for you.
Could you repeat the question again?
Are there any safety hazards within your district that constituents and citizens have complained about? If so, what would you do to address them?
Well, I've been out doing a lot of door knocking, and I live in Blair Hills, and one of the concerns that the residents have had there is the speed on Dragoon Trail. And over the last several years, we've had the portable digital speed sign placed out there, but I'm happy to say that this fall and before Thanksgiving, we are going to be installing two new digital speed traffic signs out there, that the driver of a vehicle will know their speed as they approach the sign, and we are certainly hoping that that will slow down the speed of traffic on Dragoon, because we have had a couple of serious accidents near Blair Hills, but I think this, this step will help. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Dundoo.
Mike kind of stole my thunder with Dragoon Trail there. There are a number that I've heard about, but the one is at Dragoon Trail, at that T going into Blair Hills, a number of people have told me that people coming from the west, especially when, when the sun is setting, people turning out of Blair Hills, because of the fact that a lot of people on Dragoon Trail are going at an excessive speed, that's a very dangerous, very dangerous intersection there. So I don't know if a stop sign or a roundabout, perhaps a light at that intersection, not particularly in my district, but I've heard a number of people talk about Central Park, about sometimes there's some issues on the River Walk, or sometimes there's some issues in the actual park itself, and that being a concern, which the fact that the police department may be moving even farther away gives me some pause regarding that. And finally, the construction down at Burkitt and 12th, I've heard that as a result of people having to reroute because of the construction, that's caused some issues. So just maybe some, some smarter development when it comes to the construction project.
Thank you. And Mr. Dundoo, you can hold on to that microphone. The next question will go first to you, and it broadens out the last question. It asks you to identify what you believe is the greatest challenge facing your district, and how will you address this challenge?
One of the things that I've heard from a number of individuals is houses becoming rentals. There is absolutely nothing wrong with being a landlord or being a renter. A lot of people that are my generation or younger are having a hard time getting together down payments for houses, and so renting is just becoming much more of a common occurrence. But as somebody mentioned before, when we have, for example, landlords that are out of state or corporate landlords, sometimes the properties maybe are neglected, they're not taken care of, care of as much. Mishawaka at various times has done some pushing, some pushes towards more affordable housing, some, some down payment assistance programs. I would really push and support those sorts of programs too. When you have people purchasing houses, purchasing property and investing in the community, it's just going to have so many positive effects in all areas.
Thank you. Mike Belovich.
I would agree with Joel. One of the, one of the issues that we have in Second District is issues with certain properties, and it is, Second District is somewhat unique, because we have the largest apartment complex in the Second District. We have the largest trailer court in the Second District, and we would have, I think, probably as many rental properties as any of the other five districts in the, in the community. And like I say, I've worked very closely with code enforcement. I think they're doing an excellent job, but I think we have to continue to stay on those property owners to try to protect the value of the rest of the citizens in the particular neighborhoods, so they don't lose the value of their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we turn to District Three, and the greatest challenge facing people in your district, Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
I believe one of the greatest issues facing the Third District residents would be maintaining and improving the value on their home. When I'm out walking, a lot of times I'll hear that this person isn't taking care of their home. We talk about code enforcement, so, and contacting code enforcement. So truly, I think, from what I've heard from the residents as we've been out, is the value of their homes and maintaining a safe and orderly neighborhood. And we have a very strong Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch program in, in the Third District. We've tried to implement a Revere Wood Neighborhood Watch program. Councilman Manalati and I run the Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch. We've tried to institute a Revere Wood Neighborhood Watch, which we think would be very beneficial for those citizens, but just keeping, keeping a safe and orderly community and helping people feel that their properties are, are in value, rising versus declining.
Thank you. Tony Hazen.
I think that issue's probably going to be the biggest challenge for everyone up here, Third District or citywide, is maintaining the homes, the rental properties and also the homes. And I think one of the first things we can do is have a strong code enforcement department, and I, and I think we do right now, and I think they're doing a great job, but I think we have to be diligent in keeping them on their toes and the police department on their toes. There was this study done, I think in the 1970s, it's called the Broken Windows, and it tells you that that's probably the first line of being a low-crime area, is to keep your homes nice. Once the windows get broke out, once the thing, paint starts to peel off, it seems like the crime sets in those neighborhoods. So that's a key, key part, and I've talked to code enforcement, I've talked to the police department, I can tell you this, code enforcement goes hand-in-hand with the police department in fighting crime. A lot of people don't look at it that way, but they really do. They have the front lines up there, they need to keep the homes looking sharp. I probably disagree with some things as far as the corporate owners, from what I've heard from code enforcement is, a lot of the guys who own several homes do a good job, because that is their livelihood, and it's the ones that maybe own three or four that have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we turn to District Four, Corey Smith.
I think the most significant issue for District Four, in my mind, is going back to the fiscal cliff. I say that because when you look at, one, that this was an amendment to the Constitution, and that the rates for residential 1%, rental and farm 2%, business 3%, and then that that's tied to debt is 1 half, 2 and 3% respectively, that goes up to a flat, 1, 2, 3% in 2020, which I believe reading, and I know I looked at the mayor's state of the city, that would be around $10 million that would be short to property tax by 2023. That's a constitutional amendment. You have real challenges with revenue, and if you're not going to be getting that tax, you're not going to be going, let's face it, the reality is, the third rail on something like income tax is very unlikely, and people aren't going to support it. And then you have the Parks and Recreation of the Fourth District, you have Public Safety, you have the city services, all of that is going to be impacted. I think that maybe all of us should have our head examined that are in office or running, because this is a real challenge, but I think that for a lot of reasons is the issue I see in the Fourth District. And I do think it's fantastic we're debt-free.
Thank you. Kate Volker.
Thank you. Well, I have to agree with all of you on the fiscal cliff and being able to support city services, property values, and people keeping up their homes and businesses to maintain and improve property values. Another thing that I see as an opportunity is the, still the redevelopment of the former unoral site, as well as the former central services site in the Fourth District, watching what's going to happen with those. There's a lot of exciting things going on right now, but also challenges, particularly when you're talking about redeveloping sites that have been factories, looking for environmental issues and the cost to handle the environmental issues, particularly in thinking about the central services site. So maintaining the, what the neighborhoods. I'm also gotten involved with a group called Inspire Mishawaka that will be devoted to helping downtown businesses bring business to, to them and improve downtown areas.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go first to District Three, we'll hear from Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff, and the question is this, "What standards would you like to see put in place for tax abatements? How long should taxes be abated, and what particular criteria should be used to decide who gets an abatement? Would you support minimum wage criteria, local labor criteria, and does the city do enough to get back the abatement if the promised jobs do not materialize?"
That is a long question. But I, I believe our council, our city, has done a tremendous job with tax abatements. Tax abatements are often used to help new businesses come to the city. The city has been exceptionally judicious in the manner that they've handed them out. I would be open to looking at different standards, however, to arbitrarily throw out different things here, just to have a statement, I think would, would not be prudent. We do hold companies accountable for tax abatements, and we have talked with companies that have not held up their end of the bargain. So we do hold companies accountable for tax abatements. Tax abatements is a wonderful partnership. It benefits both the city and the residents, so I, I do believe that tax abatements are a good idea. It's just that we need to look at them on a case-by-case basis, make sure It's just that we need to look at them on a case-by-case basis, make sure that it's fair and good for the city.
Thank you. Tony Hazen.
I agree. I think the city has done a great job with the tax abatements and holding the people's feet to the fire. To my knowledge, I'm not sure if we've had anybody fail on one yet. I think we have like 10 in the city, and most of them have been pretty productive and pretty good. I know we've done a few for companies that have been in a schwach for a long time, and we gave them tax abatements on some equipment to, not necessarily hold them here, but make it, they increased a few of their jobs. I think what Stacy said is, if you look at it on an individual basis, we've done a good job, and I think we should continue doing the way we have done.
Corey Smith.
Yeah, I think that I agree with what's been said. I think that if there is an issue with the tax abatement, there was an offer, it was accepted, there was a deal. If the recipient isn't holding their side of the bargain, then they should have consequences, you know, especially given what we just talked about with the fiscal cliff, all the issues and challenges for the budget, a deal's a deal. And I do think, you know, I don't know about, it'd be hard to say about criteria and what type of criteria. I mean, I think what would be important is not only the development piece, but high-quality jobs. That would be something I would always be focused on, I know that is a focus. So it seems like it's been judicious and prudent, obviously a case-by-case, but I do think if they're not upholding their side of the bargain, they should be held accountable.
Kate Volker.
Thank you. So Mishawaka's been very judicious in the way we've handled tax abatements in the time that I've been on the council, seven years. And every time that we look at tax abatement, we look for new jobs at a fair wage and the stability of the company. We review tax abatements every March, and we review them thoroughly, and do meet with companies if we have questions about whether they're able to meet the standard or the requirements of the agreement that the city has made with them. In terms of standards, I think it would be really difficult to produce standards for tax abatement, given that every tax abatement is different, every project is different, whether it's building a building, a new piece of equipment, I think it'd be difficult. In terms of the clawback of taxes, should somebody not meet the requirements, I would think that could be looked at on a, you know, a one-on-one basis, and I wouldn't be opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to District Two. Mike Belovich.
Thank you. Currently, Mishawaka has 11 active tax abatements, one will end early next year, and we have several others that we follow up later in that year. Abatements have added hundreds of jobs to Mishawaka, but as a taxpayer and a councilman, I feel that abatements can be a double-edged sword. The benefits of adding jobs and tax revenue must be weighed against the economic impact on current businesses that exist in Mishawaka. I strongly feel that companies requesting an abatement should present a solid case as to why it is needed, and the city, what benefit the city will derive from that abatement if it is awarded. Each abatement is requested should be considered on its own merit, and we do that in the city right now. And every March, we go into detail and we look at where the abatement stands. But I feel that we have done a judicious job, and they have helped both Mishawaka and new businesses coming into the community.
Thank you. Joel Dandu.
I agree with Kate Volker that every situation is different, and that's why with the tax abatement process, I would make it as data-driven as possible. One of the questions was, for how long should the abatement last? Well, let's look at some studies and make it an industry-by-industry situation. If one industry can get up and running within a year, then maybe the abatement will last that long. Studies show that a different industry takes five or 10 years to really get off the ground, perhaps make the abatement for that last longer. Regarding, one of the, part of the question was, a minimum wage or certain number of jobs, again, that could really be on a case-by-case basis. Maybe if the company is going to be able to provide 200 minimum wage jobs, that's enough, but if it's only going to be 30 or 50 jobs, those need to be significant, more significantly higher-paying jobs. Regarding enforcing, I think a possible idea is a bond process. I work with executors, sometimes the court makes them post a bond in case they're going to not hold up their end of the bargain. We could make that happen with the abatement process as well.
Thank you. And we will actually go ahead and stick with District Two here, hearing first from Joel Dandu. Would you support lobbying the state legislature to allow Mishawaka to increase the minimum wage above the state and federal wage? Why or why not?
I would not do that. I am a firm believer in individuals needing to have a living wage, but I don't think that's something that should be dealt with at the city level. Like I talked about before, there are almost always side effects and adverse consequences that come about as a result of regulation. If Mishawaka is allowed to do that, and then it happens in another city, perhaps we have a mass exodus from all different parts of the state, this sort of issue, and again, it's, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of people in my age group and demographic are struggling financially as a result of low-paying jobs. It's incredibly important, but I don't think it's something that should be dealt with at the city level. I think it needs to be dealt with at a larger level, more like the state level.
Thank you. Mike Belovich.
I would agree with Joel. I don't think that the city of Mishawaka should do that. I believe also in a minimum wage to the extent that it should be determined really in the marketplace, and I would not favor soliciting or attempting to contact the state and push for a higher minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
I'm honestly a little torn on this. I believe, A, that the state should take care of its residents, and the policy set by the state is something that we should follow. However, the cost of living has increased so much compared to inflation that if the state doesn't take responsibility and take action to make change for all members, then I believe that we, as a city, could advocate for our residents. I don't know that it's appropriate to lobby the state necessarily, so I'm a little torn on this, and I would like to do some further research on it, because I don't want to put our city in a position where businesses find themselves in a financial downfall because we mandate wages.
Tony Hazen.
No, I would not be for that. I really don't know of anybody that's paying minimum wage right now, except maybe the high school kids. I'm in, I'm in this, I'm in the convenience store business and subway business. We got away from minimum wage probably three years ago, we just couldn't find a worker, so it's already, you know, up around $9 or $10. And I think the way the economics work is, if you, if you raise minimum wage up, I'm not going to eat that cost as a business owner, I'm going to pass it through. Candy bars are not going to be $1.29, it's going to be $1.89. And what you do is just affect the people who probably shop in those type of stores. I'm not, I'm not for it, I wouldn't be for it, and definitely don't think as a local government agency, we should get into that business.
Corey Smith.
I would need to have more information. I'd like to know, you know, how many businesses are paying minimum wage, what is the average wage? I think it's an interesting point, you know, assuming what you're saying is correct, that a lot of, most businesses now pay above minimum wage. I think, you know, you do need to think about how to be competitive in bringing, you know, young people and keeping young people, but there's also the business side. I do think that as far as a city minimum wage, and again, I would like to look into this more, it seems like you would run the risk of creating kind of a crazy quilt of different wages in different places that I think would be very hard to administer and manage. So I would want to look into it more.
Thank you. Kate Volker.
Thank you. I would point to the fiscal cliff and say, who's going to pay for it? Who in the city of Mishawaka is the person that'd be responsible with negotiating with the state of Indiana an increased minimum wage, and why? Is that really the city's purview? I would, I would say that the market rate, what the market will bear, is where wages go, and that should be decided by businesses that operate in our community, not government. I would also say that if people are in need, as an example, I ran into somebody yesterday who needs assistance because she is on air, oxygen 24 hours a day, and asked me about some assistance. There are, there are programs available in the community, whether they're through nonprofits or whether they're through our own pen township office, that can assist people that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. You can keep the microphone right there. We'll go first to you, Kate Volker. And I do want to remind the audience, we have about 25 minutes left in our Q and A before we move to one-on-one conversations during the reception with the candidates. If you do have questions, go ahead and raise your note card in the air. Each had a note card in your program, so our volunteers can collect those. We still have some that people sent to us online, and so I will turn to those. Here's a specific one. It says, "Would you support or oppose a Mishawaka municipal ordinance requiring the Mishawaka Parks and Recreation Department to submit its annual budget to the Mishawaka Common Council with the following two stand-alone, separately identified line items? A, vandalism initiated remedial maintenance services, and B, wildlife-initiated remedial maintenance services?" And this goes first to you, Ms. Volker.
So we do see the, quite a bit of the Mishawaka Parks budget when we go through the budgeting process, and I'll just say, we already see it. There actually already is a budget line for wildlife maintenance, as is there a program already in place for wildlife maintenance, and I'm guessing that this is referring to geese. I'll tell you that this year, the Mishawaka Parks Department has two people that have been certified by the state of Indiana to, they actually greased the geese eggs, and this year they oiled or greased 200 geese eggs. So we already have that covered. The dollar amount is $15,000. In terms of vandalism as a line item, I honestly don't know where that is in the budget, but to my, my understanding, I don't think it's a problem, I think it's being covered. Thank you.
Corey Smith. Separate line items for wildlife-initiated remedial maintenance and vandalism-initiated remedial maintenance.
Thank you. It sounds like, you know, we've talked about the elephant in the room, geese. We talked about it, I know at the Common Council meeting, and it's obviously expensive, I think particularly, you know, the concerns with splash pads and the droppings, that makes sense. I think that, I'm on that Riverwalk every day at least once, probably twice. I think that the Parks and Recreation do a phenomenal job of staying on top of it. I see the, I don't even know how they do it. I won't get into details about the geese, but I've read stats on them, and they're productive. I think that the, so I think that, you know, that's something that's an issue. It sounds like it is a line item in the budget. I don't know if vandalism line item would necessarily be in the parks or if it would be part of public safety. So I think if that's an issue, I mean, I have seen some when I've been in the park, garbage cans, things thrown in the river, but sure, if that's an issue.
Thank you. Tony Hazen.
I don't think I would support a line item on those two issues. I would be surprised if we can't get those numbers right now. Maybe vandalism might be a little harder to decipher, how much we spend on repairs and that, as far as man-hours and that. The geese have been a problem, I think we've dealt with it pretty good in Mishawaka. I'm sure we have the cost for that, so I don't, I don't think it needs to be added as a line item.
Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
There is a difficulty to going after all of these answers here for this. However, I do understand the problem that we have with the Canada goose situation. However, these are variable topics, so we have a difficulty predicting how much vandalism will occur, but I respect the Parks Department and their ability to decide on what is appropriate as far as their financing goes. There are some line item, budgeted items in there already for wildlife, and as Kate mentioned, we are taking steps to mitigate overpopulation of the geese already. But it would be an opportune for me to forecast or estimate how much needs to be spent on vandalism, because that's going to vary depending on, on the situation in our, in our Parks Department.
Thank you. Mike Belovich.
Thank you. As far as vandalism goes, I think that's something that is, from an insurance standpoint, covered under property and casualty, so casualty coverage, so I don't think it would be necessary to add a line item for that. However, geese, you know, I might be in favor of that. I think we need to keep track of the dollars that are spent in trying to handle that problem. And I know that we have two individuals who are certified, and we've taken out a number of geese over the last several years, and I think that we should continue to do that. And I think if necessary, we should bring in the state of Indiana to give us some assistance. Thank you.
Joel Dandu.
I would not support such an ordinance for those specific line items. Yes, human vandalism and quote-unquote wildlife vandalism, to some extent, are an issue, but I think we're adequately handling those issues. The city is currently debt-free and with a balanced budget, so back to the, there's not a problem, why try to fix it? That's, again, my answer. For human vandalism, I particularly think we should put, if we're going to put forth any money, we should put forth towards the source of the problem. Children aren't born thinking, man, I can't wait to pull a hand dryer out of a Central Park restroom. It's oftentimes an issue with boredom or perhaps some integrity issues. We can target that in other ways, not just targeting the ultimate issue, but trying to get it at the source. For wildlife vandalism, I golf at Everheart, I am well aware of the goose-dropping situation, but, but as I've said, I think, even though it is an issue, I think we're adequately handling the issue.
Thank you. We will send this next question first to District Three candidates, starting with Tony Hazen, and it is one that we received by Facebook, and it is fairly long. Says, "What are your views on getting this city to step up its game in the area of demanding that heating and air conditioning contractors, as well as other types of contractors, plus most realtors, be prevented from installing their advertising signs in people's yards and on tree lawns? This is already against city ordinances, and the planning department is tasked with both writing up violations and removing them, but that overwork department seems to both be always behind the eight ball on this, and the offenders seem to be continually reoffending. I would propose that we absolutely prohibit contractor signs, period, so that, because they regularly get left behind. And my idea is that we have company-specific injunctions that would bring serious court actions against these repeat offenders. What are your thoughts?"
What they said is true. There's already, I don't know if everybody knows what the tree lawn is, but it's the grass here between sidewalk and the curb. You're not supposed to put any signs in there. I think we have the ordinances in place that would control it. I haven't seen that problem, so I don't know if it's a huge problem out there, but I surely wouldn't go filing for injunctions and that over signs. I think we could probably step up maybe the patrol a little bit more and see if we find them out there, but that'd be about it. I personally think that they do a pretty good job in removing them. I know I've messed up a couple times and put my business signs out, and like the next day, they come and make sure I know to get them out of the tree lawns. I think we're okay where we're at.
Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff. Handcuffs in prison?
Handcuffs in prison? No, no, not yet. That's an escape room thing. So I, I think our city does a really nice job with maintaining the tree lawn area and dealing with the people and businesses that put signs out there. So I realize that there are companies, and I've seen them, that, I'm aware of many, that put signs out in places where they shouldn't. It does add to distracted driving, which I think we can It does add to distracted driving, which I think we can all support is a terrible thing. But I don't see that we need to add this to the plate that the city already has. It seems like it would be an expense that is not necessary for a few signs. I think if we are out driving around and it becomes a problem with one or two companies, maybe address those companies individually, but I think to create an ordinance or however your long question stated it, I think would be a lot of bureaucracy involved and not necessary.
Mike Belovich. Needing to step up that enforcement or even make the penalty stricter?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we have to step up enforcement. One thing that I like about those signs is, if I collect them, I can cut the legs off and I use them for my election signs that I put in the memorials. I don't really feel it's necessary to create an ordinance or to go back after those individuals. I think that the individual homeowners should be able to handle that on their own with the particular contractor that they're working with. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Dendu.
Mike brought up a good point regarding election signs. Perhaps this question is being motivated by the individual being sick of seeing all the election signs right now. I've got two thoughts on this particular question. First, I think it would be almost impossible to enforce if I, for some reason, didn't like Mr. Hazen, and I decided to take one of his signs and stick it in the tree lawn. Is anyone going to know that it was me that did that, as opposed to Mr. Hazen doing that? No, of course not. So almost impossible to enforce. Second, it seems like we're already doing a fairly good job with this, and as the mayor said in his state of the city regarding the water purity issue, we can get something to 99%, and there can be a certain amount of funds expended to get there. That last 1% or 0.1% can be incredibly costly to get to, and I think that might be one of those situations. If we're already doing well enough with the limited resources that we're putting towards it, perhaps we shouldn't try to go above and beyond just to get that last 1%.
We'll come to Corey Smith. District Four.
No. I think that, no, seriously, I mean, you know, I think code enforcement's doing a great job. In all my talks to people, I've only heard one issue with code enforcement. By all accounts, according to everyone, they're doing a great job. If there is a perpetrator that is particularly egregious in violations in numbers, I'm sure they will go after them. You know, I have to say, being, I'm probably typecast as a Democrat, but preparing and reading through the code, I was getting kind of annoyed reading about all the code that I have to deal with. But seriously, if it was a problem, I think we'd be heard about, and I think code enforcement's doing a great job, so no.
Thank you. No. I would also agree with everybody else, but I would also say, my experience, it's kind of a touching experience. There was a, when I was running a nonprofit, there was a company that wanted to make a donation to my nonprofit for every sign that could go in people's yards that used their business, and he told me specifically that the city of Mishawaka would not allow signs in the yard. So I think that it's a solution looking for a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will go with this next question first to District Three, and Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff. And unfortunately, due to time limitations, this will be a speed round question, even though it's a huge topic. Okay. So, "Do you think that the city is spending TIF dollars appropriately?" 30 seconds.
Well, TIF is a two-day lecture, but yes, I honestly do. The city has been very judicious in the way that they have spent TIF money. We look at that, the council looks at that, the city planning looks at that. We have been able to develop the university corridor, we've been able to improve our parks, we've been able to improve the Main Street corridor. TIF money, I believe, is being used very well.
Tony Hazen.
I would agree that TIF money's being used well, and I don't think everybody understands what TIF has done for us. I can guarantee you, or at least believe that we would still be looking at Unirreal downtown Mishawaka if we didn't have TIF money. We'd be in the same boat as the Drury Building in South Bend. We probably wouldn't have the three underpasses right now. One of the mandates that the federal government gave us was the storm sewer, and that was a very, very costly endeavor. We used a little bit of TIF money to offset our utility bills, otherwise our utility bills would be higher right now. So I think the city has done a great job with the TIF money, and I think we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Corey Smith.
Yeah, I agree. Everything I've seen and read, TIF is doing a good job. I think that it provides a means for new property tax revenue. It doesn't replace existing taxing units, and I think it also helps relieve the burden on taxpayers, and I think that it's led to a lot of good economic development and also job creation, so, yes.
Kate Volker. And we'll add 10 seconds to your time to tell people what TIF means.
Oh, tax increment funding. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I think TIF is really a wonderful tool for the city of Mishawaka, and one of the things, I mean, Tony and, really kind of went through a litany of things that TIF has provided us, but I think most importantly, what TIF has done for us is it's provided wonderful quality of life for the city of Mishawaka, and it's attracted many businesses, many new residents, much new investment in our city, and it's, the way that the city of Mishawaka has used TIF is going to benefit us for, honestly, hundreds of years to come. That's it.
Thank you. We'll go all the way to the other side of the table. District Two, Joel Dendu.
I do think that it's been spent appropriately. The reason I think that is, in the results, a large part of the purpose of TIF is to create development, which attracts more development, and then so on and so on. You just see a snowball effect, and that's exactly what we've been seeing. So hindsight is, of course, 2020. We can't know at the outset whether it's going to work, but looking at the results that we have so far, I definitely feel as if the TIF money has been spent appropriately.
Thank you. Mike Belovich.
Yes, I think TIF has improved the quality of life in Mishawaka, and in fact, it's actually saved lives. The two underpasses on Main Street have made it very easy for ambulances to get to St. Joe Regional Hospital. And TIF has also, with infrastructure building, has brought new business, new jobs to Mishawaka, which is a very positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have time for one last 30-second speed round question, and we can, since she's holding the microphone, we'll just start with Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff. It says, "Do you think that vaping should be permitted, or should there be a citywide ban since so many young people have developed health problems from vaping?"
Well, this probably won't be a popular answer, but at least I'm honest. There have been a number of reported deaths from vaping, and, you know, statistically, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head. I do know that it's a dangerous activity to partake in, but I also believe that we are adults and capable of making up our own mind. I personally would not do it, but I also don't believe that we are in a position to tell people what they can and can't do in their own time, in their own homes.
Tony Hazen.
I don't think we should get into it as a local government. I think we should leave it up to the FDA and the federal government to decide.
I think state, federal, regulation law, clearly there's something going on. I mean, the illnesses that have happened have been severe and sudden, and so there's something clearly up with something that's in the product, but I think, yeah, federal law and state law, regulation.
What they said. Really, I don't think that it's something that the city of Mishawaka should get involved in at this time. Frankly, there's so many unknowns about it, and there's also so much investigation going on right now with vaping, that I think that we should really let the process continue in terms of finding out what's really going on with the product. With that being said, at this point, it is a legal product, and people are allowed to do what they want with the legal product. However, if they're underage, they shouldn't be using it. Thank you.
Mike Belovich.
I don't think the city of Mishawaka should be involved, but we have had two deaths in Indiana, and I think both of those deaths were teens, and I think that the parents ought to step up and govern that within their own home. Thank you.
Joel Dendu.
There's a reason that a lot of us are saying these sorts of things should be a state or federal issue, for something like the city of Mishawaka to fund a study, to come to conclusive answers on the safety of vaping or the health effects of vaping, there goes our budget right there, and it probably exceeds our budget. So with certain issues, there's a reason that the government was set up this way at all these different levels. We handle certain things better, and state and federal handle other things better.
Thank you. Now we come to the time for our closing statements, but before we hear from the candidates, I would just like to remind people, you will be able to find footage of the forums that we posted here at the Mishawaka Penn Harris Public Library online. You can go to the League of Women Voters website or the American Democracy Project website, where we have links to footage of all of our events. I would invite people in the audience today to fill out their surveys and let us know what we can do differently or better in the future. And I would also invite folks to stick around for some informal networking with the candidates. Now we turn to a time of closing statements, where each candidate will have 30 seconds to tell you, the voters, why they deserve your vote on Election Day. We'll start with District Two, Joel Dendu.
I'm an attorney. I'm a small business owner. I'm a husband. I'm a father. My life up to this point has prepared me for this role. I'm ready for it. I'm motivated for it. I feel like we're going to be facing some unique challenges, some difficult situations, and I believe that my training and my current life circumstances make me the right individual for the job. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Mike Belovich.
I believe my nine years' experience on the city council, being on the Budget and Finance Committee and on the Personnel Committee, I think I'm very fiscally responsible, and I want to ensure that the Mishawaka departments stay that way. I'm open-minded, I'm responsive to my constituents, and I want to do all that I can to keep Mishawaka a great place to live, work, raise a family, and actually retire in.
Thank you. Now we hear from the council District Three candidates, starting with Stacy Petco-Ryzdorff.
Thank you. I've been so impressed tonight by the questions that have come up. The thoughtful nature of your inquiries shows just how invested you are in the city, and thank you for being here tonight. I am excited to hopefully continue my work advocating for my neighbors in the third district. I love serving the city of Mishawaka. I look forward to using my expertise to think critically, listen to feedback, and to continually make improvements for the city that we all love and call home. I'm passionate about the community, I'm passionate about families, and I would appreciate your support and vote this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Hazen.
I've served the community my whole adult life, either through the police department or residences. My wife and I continually give back to the community through time and financial assistance to the community. I believe that we have a commitment to make sure that we can raise our kids and our grandkids in this community, and I think we've done a good job. Like I said, my kids have been here, a few moved away, and then have come back because Mishawaka's a great community. And I can guarantee you this, if I am elected, I will watch out for your money like it's my own, and I will guarantee you, I will work tirelessly to make sure that our community is safe for our kids and our grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Council District Four, Corey Smith.
Thanks to everyone for being here tonight and for your very thoughtful questions. Me and my family moved here a couple years ago. There's a lot of places we could have went. We chose here, and we chose Mishawaka. I want to stay here and raise my family here. I left my job in DC recently. Today I started work for Notre Dame. I'm here, and I want to bring the experience that I've had working on bipartisan legislation, federal level, state level, working with a lot of different stakeholders, and getting things done, and I want to do that here and help in Mishawaka.
Kate Volker.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here. My broad experience, including seven years on the city council, a career in sales management and in nonprofit executive leadership, as well as my volunteer leadership, has put me in a kind of a unique situation, having both business experience but also being in a business that cared for people. When one has experienced longer experience, it would seem that a learning curve is short, and it certainly is. With that being said, though, one of the things that I love about being on the city council is that I'm always learning new things and meeting new people. I have high energy, high enthusiasm, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for our hometown, and I hope that you vote Volker on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and let's have another round of applause for our candidates.